I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of October 19th here at the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. Could you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. So I'd like to welcome Maya Hay as our student rep. Welcome. And could I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes from the September 21st, 2015, school committee meeting?
Moved. Second.
Moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. And let's see, under recognitions, we have the Middle Senior High School. Uh, Dr. Oakley?
Yeah, Mr. Bardwell couldn't be here this evening because he had to be at the soccer game in Brockton, so. I told him that I would talk about the sportsmanship honor roll award. This is actually the third year in a row that West Bridgewater has received one of the MIA Sportsmanship Honor Roll Awards. And that will be given to students. Students will go to a presentation at Gillette Stadium in November and get that. And it will be another patch. If you, we don't have the banners up yet in the gym, but when we put the banners up, one of them is the MIA Sportsmanship Awards. And when you get one, then they put a different patch on for the years. So basically, like was explained, that has to do with no students getting any cards for anything, no one being reported for inappropriate behavior or for anything with poor sportsmanship. So that's nice. This is the third year in a row that we've received that in West Bridgewater, so.
That's great. Excellent. Let's keep it going. Under the superintendent's update, Dr. Oakley, we'd like to start with the Middle Senior High School school building update.
Yeah, and any of you guys can chime in anytime because we've had building committee meetings and stuff. But the school building update, we actually have, every Tuesday morning, we have construction update meetings with the general contractor and the architects. And we're still just working through the punch list. We're also trying to finalize some of the things like commissioning of the HVAC system and those types of things. But most of the things are just like the finished work. It's not as much, things that affect really a lot of the day-to-day operations, but they need to have things that are finished, things that need to be changed, things need to be updated. So we're working on that list. And I mean, the list started with thousands of items, so they have been coming in on Saturday. For example, this Saturday, the people that put the glass in on the control booth at the top of the auditorium and also at the ticket window and some other, they came in and started on that. So things like that. But they have been coming in on weekends to try to get a lot of those items on the punch list done. You may have heard today that there was some problem with some of the heating in this building. It wasn't that the heating system was broken, but the report that Mr. Holden got and was telling me a little bit earlier was that when they were working on it, and they were here all last week working to make sure they could get it to the point of being commissioned, the whole HVAC system, they turned something off and it didn't get turned back on. We, our people still need to be trained in all of these aspects. So if something goes out right now and they don't have the expertise because they haven't worked with it, that's what happens. We have to call the company in. So the company was gonna be here until late this evening, going through every single space, making sure that the switches were on and the valves were working. And I think they did find a valve in a classroom. He said, "Mr. Holden, that, you know, they had to, that wasn't open." So, you know, it's the first time for everything. It was the first time we actually needed a lot of heat. And they had worked on it all last week. So that's one thing. Parking update. The kids have been using the parking lot. I talked about that. That, is that-
We haven't had any, it's been good. No ones, no accidents. Shorter walk.
Once the weather got, you know, I still think the walk from components was waking them up in the morning and maybe we should have just moved the parking lot to there. I don't think the kids, I don't think the kids would want that, especially in the snow. But, so that, that's happening. And again, we're just working on finalizing some of the, some of the little things. We actually have our first performance in the auditorium this Friday. So they'll really get to try out the sound system, try out all of the things for the first time. And, you know, that's not gonna be perf, it's gonna take time because everything's so high-tech and everything's so new. So to do a smaller performance like this is good, so that when it comes time to do a big musical in the spring, they have all that, the glitches out of it. So it's a lot of, a lot of stuff that they have to learn. The other technology, you can walk around, you see that the TVs do have announcements, we have Comcast hooked up. There's just a few more things they need to do with that. I mean, just, this is a very high-tech building. And so nothing happens overnight. As a matter of fact, some of the workers that I ran into this summer in the auditorium said, "I've never seen, I haven't done a building this high-tech yet." So it makes sense that we all have to learn together. But slowly but surely, it's coming along. As far as some furniture things, there's still some furniture that we're waiting to come in, but it's, a lot of it's extra furniture. There's some things that we may be overlooked in ordering because we were looking at the whole picture and didn't really see things that we'll be putting through. So the FFNE is coming in. There's some equipment and working on, on those types of things. So, you know, the next phases, you can see that they're taking out waste from the old building. And then they'll start working a little more on, on the fields, but they're slowly doing the site work. And the fields, we already had made a decision that there, there won't be any sports competitions here come spring. There may be a chance to have tennis because it's on the other side of the building and it's just its own entity is, and they don't have to do a lot of the site work that they have to do on the front of the building. So if there's anything here in the spring, there's a possibility there might be tennis. But the first sports out front would be field hockey and football in the fall. Because even with the baseball field, we wanna give it an extra growing season. So to give it an extra growing season, we wanna give it the spring because they put it in the fall. So, I mean, we're moving along. We're here. And Maya, you're in the building all the time, so what do you think?
It's good. I like it. It's less crowded, I will have to say, because the middle schoolers are downstairs and we're up here.
Yeah?
Technology's great. I was actually just talking about the science labs. There's a new forensics course that one of our teachers, Ms. Pope, is running. And we actually got to like test our blood, like blood, not our blood, but like fake blood out and like see how it clotted. And then we got to go over to the police station and like try out like blood splattering, like meat and stuff. Dr., you were there.
They were a little too into it.
It's a lot, I like it. It's fun.
That's neat.
Now, you told me last year, when you saw the auditorium and it wasn't even hardly finished, that you were gonna live there. So does it live up to what you wanted it to be?
It does. I love it. The fact that, I'm actually, I'm in the show this Friday, so you should all come. And yeah, it's awesome. And it's AC, so it's even better. Not right now, but it's freezing outside. I'm thinking forward to the summer.
Good. So, I don't know if you have any questions about it, but we just-
Could you just comment, and this is again just by way of, I guess, the punch list on finish work that has to be done by way of, that the roof is secure and solid, that it was not the roof that was leaking?
Yeah, that heavy, heavy rain we had where the water came in through lockers and stuff. It actually, there was not a leak in the roof, so everyone can know. And thank God, there wasn't a leak in the roof because then you'd have to do a lot more to find it. But it was not the roof that was leaking. If you look at the building, on the inside hallways on the second floor, you have clear story windows, which are those windows that are kind of frosted, but they let light in. Along the bottom of one of the sections, it wasn't, the seal wasn't complete that they, they put on there. Should've been done, should've been completed, wasn't. That's where the water came in. They, we had a lot of rain one day, the next day we didn't have some. We went up and sealed it. Then we got rain on the weekend and it, it hadn't leaked there, so. And that was a good thing. The other one that people, I heard around saying, "Oh, there's a leak in the auditorium ceiling." No, there was not a leak in the auditorium ceiling. That was actually condensation on the HVAC system and has since been taken care of. So the roof is good and we need to make sure that gets out to the entire community. The roof is fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now the park update. Dr. Oakley?
This is gonna be the Dr. Oakley Show.
Isn't it always?
Look at Jim. Wake up, Jim, wake up.
We already had this discussion.
Yes, we did.
Lengthy.
Quick park update for everyone to know that we were a park school. We went to it last year, grades three through eight. And regardless of anything that I say here or anything about a decision, up to the class, I believe of 2019, 10th grade right now is still on par with taking the MCAS. They haven't, they're not changing the high stakes test until they deal with three through eight. But next month, midway through November, they'll be having a vote of the Board of Education to vote whether or not to scrap MCAS completely and go 100% with park or to stay with MCAS. People ask me all the time, "What do you think's gonna happen?" And honestly, I think it's a, at this point, my personal opinion is it's like really 50/50. A couple of years ago, I would've said that it was, you know, 80/20, we'd go with park. But with a change in the governor's office and who they put in as his appointees for the Board of Education, that could change and you don't know. No one's really given us an idea of the direction they're going in. Although tonight's meeting of the Board of Education and tomorrow's meeting, they will have conversation. It's really their last conversation about it before they vote in November. So if you read the paper tomorrow, there'll probably be some idea of maybe the direction they'll go because you'll, that you'll hear what people on the board have said in discussion. That said, we right now are just going with what we did last year and preparing, teaching the mass curriculum frameworks from 2011 and then assuming that we're going to take the park exam. If we don't take the park exam because they say, "No, we're not gonna do park, you're going back to the MCAS," that's fine for us. Two years ago, when I said we were gonna go park, I said the worst thing that can happen is we go back to MCAS. That's not a problem. It's actually an easier test. And we've done it before, so we really won't skip a beat. We can go back to, to the MCAS. And because we went park and we went technology with park, we upgraded our elementary schools with a really fast wireless infrastructure. We have one-to-one devices for all the kids. So it's really a win-win for us. So even if we don't take the park test online, we still have a ton of technology that's being integrated for instruction. So really wasn't any loss for us. And we'll know that hopefully in November. You never know what can happen because it's politics. And they could come to November and say, "Oh, we're gonna put it off again. We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that." Put it this way, I think if they say we're going to park, that's easy for us because we already did it. If they say we're going to MCAS, we go back to MCAS, again, we already did it. So we, no matter what direction, we have a lot less frustration than if a school that hasn't done park yet, they say you're going to park and you only have a few months to get ready for it. So I think we're in a good place with it. And if we, if I do get more of an update, but they're not giving us a lot of information other than the timeline for things, then I'll let you know. As far as last year's scores, tomorrow, the state scores are coming out, but it's not by district or anything. It's just overall what the state did. And then at the end of October, we'll get scores for the district, but we can't put them out to the public yet. And it won't be until the end of November that we actually can send the results, the individual results, out to parents.
Is that for both park and MCAS?
No, MCAS is already out. And that was just 5th grade science, 8th grade science, 9th grade biology, and 10th grade ELA and now. Those, those individual scores have already come in.
Okay.
So it's really where we are. I don't know if anyone has any comments on it. I know Mr. Holden and I were talking about a report that came out last week. There were a couple individual reports that the Department of Education had commissioned to give them more information to make their decision. And that one of the reports came back and said that if you're looking at being ready to be in college, they found that the park and MCAS, there really wasn't that much difference to determine college readiness. So that's information they're gonna take. So some people will probably look at that and say, "Well, if there's not that much difference, why are we going to something brand new?" On the other hand, the state and the commissioner and the people that are working with park will say, "Yeah, but it's still a more rigorous exam. There's other things besides just being ready for college." So those are the debates that you're gonna hear going back and forth. But we'll see what happens. I, I mean, we're in good shape either way, so.
The Spring Street School roof. Speaking of roofs.
That roof- Does need some help. We have been approved by the Mass School Building Authority to do an accelerated repair project on the Spring Street School roof. Accelerated repair because they like to, from soup to nuts, go in one year. So we, the feasibility was when the MSBA came out and said, "Yeah, you definitely need a new roof." We met with the OPM and the architects the other day. They went up and looked at it, so now they're gonna put together a schematic design. And they're gonna come back with what they think the price, the price value would be and also what the best, you know, way to do it would be. The thing about Spring Street roof, and you can tell just by looking at it, everyone in town knows, it's just, it's a different type of roof. It's actually, because it's in pods, it's actually three roofs and not just one continual like when we did Roselle. Also has those, well, in the history of West Bridgewater, it's called the Alaskan Landscape Roof. And so it has those, those, some people would call them igloos or whatever, the skylights. So it's a little bit different than just saying, "We're coming out, we're gonna just do a rubber roof." I did ask them that, for them to consider whatever material they use or whatever they do, if they could match the new Middle Senior High School roof because it is kind of all on one campus. And I noticed now, when you drive down Spring Street, you, the way your eye goes, you really want it to, to look the same. So I forget, Sarah, when they said they would get back?
Yeah, well, we walked the schematic design into the MSBA by December 9th so that we can make their January board meeting. And if that's the case, then we'd need a special town meeting February, March, so just to get the approval from the town. If we miss that date, then we go in February 17th or March 30th date, which doesn't give us much time to go out to bid. And we would love to start the roof, obviously, right when the school gets out, so they can finish it in December and have it done when we go back. So I know the architects are kinda like December 9th, but the OPM is pushing that.
I mean, the architects did say, all of them, that they've worked on a school like that in different towns. So it's not like they don't know what, what it's like. So that will help them with their timeline.
Have you had any meetings with the architects from the schematic design yet?
We just met them that one day last week.
Are they, are they suggesting to eliminate the skylights possibly?
They're looking at all different-
Some of them are capped anyways now, so we wouldn't replace those where we have the drop seal.
Yeah, but the ones that are still existing?
They are gonna come in with a couple options.
Okay.
Because some, you know, will the MSBA reimburse our skylights? So they're coming back with options, not just one.
Yeah, they said two or three different options.
My goal is to eliminate them. They, they only leak over time. Trust me.
So we'll see what the options are. Any other questions?
It is good news. All right, the Behavioral Health Task Force update.
That's Dr. Henske.
We need a different song.
Look how fast she got, right up there.
And because I'm not sitting there tonight, I'm so excited to be a spectator.
Have you sit over here if you'd like?
It's so much better out there.
Yeah, I think so too.
It's super, super nice and-
Right between Billy and I. Football right between Billy and I.
Actually, that would be fun. I would. So- Dr. Oakley asked me to come and talk tonight about the Behavioral Health Task Force. And I've talked to some of you individually about this, but I'm just gonna kinda give you a really quick overview of how we got here and where, where we really are. So last year during strategic planning, we spent a lot of time doing like a needs assessment of the district. What's going on? What, what are the needs? What do we need to do? And it was crazy because out of every group, like including buildings and grounds, I feel like anxiety came out as like the number one issue. Technology was anxiety, like teaching and learning anxiety and certainly the wellness group that I'm a part of.
I wouldn't have come out of building of the grounds if we were our-
Well, I didn't say it was all student anxiety. It was some staff anxiety as well. So it was really like the number one issue. It was kind of amazing. So we decided, that was, you know, probably in the mid-wintertime, we would get a group together to look at this issue and just kind of really, this was a small sample of people talking about this. Let's see what's really going on. So we met in June and I had sent out an email to administrators and all of the staff and invited them to come to this meeting after school, so it was a volunteer thing. The administrators had to come, but everybody else, it was a volunteer. And we had like over 30 people come. So we have teachers, related service providers like behavior specialists, instructional assistants, and administrators. People are not getting paid to do this and they're coming in droves. I brought candy, but it wasn't even that good candy. It was, it wasn't that that brought them. There's a real need in our district to kind of support everyone's behavioral health. So what we did at that first kickoff meeting was decide to take the summer. People would take, they would take a look at social emotional curricula that are out there over the summer, do some kind of preliminary research, bring back their findings. We were gonna meet in August, again, during the summer volunteering and come back and see what we found. These people came back in August. And I, this time I had breakfast food, so you know, that could've been it too, but they came back. And at that meeting, we made the following decisions and that's what's driving our work this year. So first, we had staff volunteer to pilot different programs that they had researched over the summer. We're using the strengths and differences questionnaire to take like pre and post data. So we're gonna pilot these programs, but first we're taking data to see where we start. And then we're gonna take data on, using the same measurement to see the efficacy of the programs. So folks are doing that. We're piloting responsive classroom this year. Five of our teachers were extensively trained in responsive classroom this summer, so they're piloting that. We're piloting second step, social thinking and zones of regulation. And then we'll use the post data to make a decision about a district-wide approach to social emotional learning. My original hope was that we would have one from like pre-K to 12. My guess is we're gonna actually have two because what we're finding is that there's great elementary programs and there's some okay middle, senior, high school kind of age ones, but there really isn't one that bridges pre-K to 12. And that's okay. So that's one piece that folks are doing. In addition, we also decided that the entire district would implement one program starting in September called Calm Classroom. And this is a mindfulness type of program. So over the loudspeaker, in each of the schools, they're doing daily mindfulness breaks. They're like three to five minute breathing exercises. And at the Middle Senior High School, they're doing it on Mondays and Fridays, so twice a week. But all the other buildings, they're doing it every day. That was something we felt like we didn't need to pilot, we could just do. And it's amazing because I'm actually seeing little kids use these strategies when they're flipping out. It's hilarious and useful. So they'll start to get upset and you'll see the breathing and then they can calm themselves down. It's not like all the time. It's not every day, but it's, it's happened this year. So it's been wonderful to see. And for the staff, the staff are also doing these mindfulness activities. And so it really is just a really quick way to support the adults in our community as well. And then we also decided we wanted to offer varied types of professional development for supporting staff as they work with students with behavioral health challenges. So first off, we have Dr. Najah Riley, who, she wrote Anxiety and Depression in the Classroom. And she also spoke at a conference that Dr. Oakley and I were at this summer, and she's speaking to us on Wednesday, actually, in another thing. So she's gonna come to a faculty meeting at three buildings, Middle Senior High School, Roselle, and Howard. And the Spring Street folks are gonna go to the Howard one because it just made more sense. And she's gonna talk for an hour to the staff about anxiety and depression in the classroom. She has an elementary bend that she, that her book is about. But then she was also a co-author of Break Free From Depression, which came out of Children's Hospital, which is for teens and adolescents. So we're really excited to have her come. She's coming in February, I think, to Roselle, March to Howard, and May to Middle Senior High School because that's when her schedule was available. So that's one piece. But then the second, well, another piece is we're having embedded professional development from Bamsi come in. So we have a clinical psychiatrist, Dr. Russ Livingston, who worked with our preschool last year. He and a clinician are gonna work in all of our buildings this year doing case consultation. So the clinician will come in, observe the student for two hours. And then the team will get together with Dr. Livingston, I presume, to discuss the case and give feedback and suggestions for the teachers. So it's kind of like boots-on-the-ground interventions for teachers to work with our most challenging students in terms of behaviors and social emotional health. And then we're also doing a district-wide survey of staff to get a sense of what specific areas of behavioral health they need the most help with. And so we're going to be doing that as well. And all of this, these pilots, the PD opportunities, everything is being funded from a grant. So I did wanna just put that out there, that that's how we're able to do that. And as you know, grants come and go. So that grant is available for this year and we're so grateful that it is. In addition, building-based student support teams are meeting weekly or bi-weekly. And they're collectively and repeatedly discussing the needs and progress of students with behavioral health needs. So what that means is they're keeping track of kids. And let's say they talked about Johnny last week. Johnny was no, had no issues this week. We still circle back to Johnny and we make sure we're tracking, just to, so we don't have kids fall through the cracks. And these aren't always the kind of heavy hitter kids. It's the kids that don't make as much noise, the kids that aren't as obvious. We're tracking those kids as closely as we can every week or every bi-weekly to make sure we meet their needs. And then this district-based team, we're meeting throughout the school year to check in on the pilots, to see how the PD is going. Our next meeting is in November 9th. And then ultimately, at the end of the year, we'll make decisions about our next steps. So it's exciting. It's like, I keep joking that I could be the Assistant Superintendent of Mental Health and have a full-time job. It's, it's really incredible how many resources are out there and how excited our community partners are to work with us on supporting kids.
I just had a quick question. For Dr. Riley's PD, when Dr. Riley comes in?
Yes.
You said it was for the staff or the administrative from each school. Would you open that up to the 30 or so people that are in that volunteer group?
Yes, so she's gonna go to each building. And so yes, those folks will, they're going to their staff meeting anyway. Because we don't have professional development time available to do this, we're using staff meeting time. The principals have given up one of their staff meetings. So those volunteers go to those staff meetings.
Are some of those volunteer parents though?
No, no, no.
Oh, they're all either teachers or admin?
Yes, it's all school-based staff currently. I mean, we'd love to have, parents could come. It's just, this is sort of a really nuts and, it's not philosophical anymore. Now we're kind of doing the down and dirty work of how do you make a system? How do you get a system in place to provide these kinds of supports to kids?
How long is this grant for?
I wrote it, it's a year grant. It hopefully will get re-upped next year, but it's also a grant that I can use for a lot of different things. And sometimes I have to prioritize other things, you know, I can't use it for things like this. But this year, it was a real easy decision to use. And it's not, it's not that much money at all. But we're spreading it really, really well, I think, so.
That sounds awesome. Thank you.
To follow up on that, do any of those people, do they do parent nights or do parent, like talk to parents about mental health stuff? Like could we see if someone would want something like that?
Well, it's funny. You should say that. Next month, I'm gonna talk to, we didn't even plan that. Next month, I'm gonna talk to you about our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which met in October. And we now have officers of, which is exciting. And one of the things, our next, we call it the CPAC. So our next CPAC meeting is in- So our next CPAC meeting is in January. We're having Dr. Denny Howley from North River Collaborative, who's also on this task force, by the way. She's in charge of our social work program. So we have a social worker at the Roselle McDonald School through this grant. Dr. Howley's in charge of that grant. She's gonna come and talk to families about behavioral health and how to best, how to recognize. I don't know, really, we're gonna talk about what makes the most sense for it to be. And that is open, not just to families of individuals with disabilities. CPAC is open to anybody who's interested. So that will be posted, you know, I put it on my Facebook page, Twitter. I'll ask Dr. Oakley to retweet it, 'cause she has a heck of a lot more followers than I do. I know, she's so popular. And, I know, the snow days, exactly. So, so that will be happening. Bigger picture than that, I think the Community Drug Night that's coming up next week.
The twenty-ninth?
Is that next week or is that in two weeks? I can't keep track of where I am in time. So I think that is another direction and a way that we're communicating with families about, you know, 'cause, 'cause the, I should've said too, on our district-based task force, Dr. Howley from North River is one with the social work piece. And Ryan Morgan, who's the Director of Independence Academy, which is the recovery high school in Brockton that we are a part of through North River Collaborative, he is also on that task force and has been a really great resource for us. So he's coming to that drug awareness night next week as well, so. So there's a lot. And any feedback or input, we'd love to hear, you know, any ideas, but it's exciting.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. I don't think all of that information has been circulated, so thank you.
Probably not. All right, thanks.
Yeah, it's a lot, and they just started recently. But, you know, to get that many people together, and they were really excited about, we're gonna do something. It's gonna expand, it's gonna, and it's going to make, you know, when you have the behavioral health, and you have the mental health under control, and you have those behaviors, then it all contributes to a positive learning environment. When you have a positive learning environment.
You know what the teachers are saying too, is like, I don't have time for one more thing. I don't have time for one more thing. No one's saying that about this, because everyone understands, we can't do anything without this.
Without this.
Under control. And that's the part that I think people are really responding to.
Right, good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since, yeah, since last May, since the last strat meeting, right? Since May?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right after that.
All right, now on to business, the 2015-2016 Superintendent's Goals. Dr. Oakley.
Oh, that's me again.
The Dr. Oakley Show.
I heard that little.
Wake up, Jim.
Okay, I'm gonna give her a hand on one of these.
This is all you're giving us this year, right?
You can read along.
We don't have to read that.
No, that's my evaluation.
That's the evaluation. Not yet.
If you wanna take a year off from that, you guys can vote. You can all make a motion.
You wouldn't know what to do without our comments. Yeah, we could.
We could tie it in.
That's right.
We could tie it in to something.
We have to put our minds together and do something different.
Sure, we could, we could work both ways. It's a negotiation. Everything's a negotiation.
Yeah, I should sit in between.
Everything is a negotiation.
Make a motion.
It'll all be to your benefit in the long run.
Um, okay. So my goals for fifteen sixteen, I met with the Chair of the School Committing, Mrs. Sullivan, and we went over my goals. And this is what, yeah. So as you called from last year, there were some of them that were not just one-year goals. One of the things about the new evaluation tool in the state is teachers actually get two-year goals. And for some reason, superintendent administrators, they're on one-year goal cycle. It's kind of hard, oftentimes it's hard to get something done in one school year. So you really do need multi-year goals. You can do that, but you just have to re, you still have to be evaluated yearly on yearly progress of the goal. So anyway, number one is going to, was a goal last year, but it's gonna have a little more structure to it. And it's to increase during the school year, increase my visibility in classrooms and feedback to building administrators through an increased number of structured learning walks with building principals. And we wanna morph that. So last year, what happened is I had set times that I would meet with the principal and actually do the walkthroughs with them, and they have a walkthrough template. And then we would, as we were going through the building, discuss what we saw and talk about it, and see if we were on the same page with different things that we thought about. And to make that even more meaningful, in some cases, we're gonna do, people call it instructional rounds, you know, doctors go around and do things. So add more people. And second half of the year, we'd like to have all of the administrators kind of walk through and talk about it, 'cause I think it's gonna help their practice if there's other people talking about it and what they see from a different perspective. So I think it's, um, some of the principals, they might be a little nervous, 'cause like, oh, another principal coming in my building and walking around with me. But it, it truly is just to say, yeah, you do, you know, it's good to see other things. And it's good for the principals to see what's going on in other buildings, so they know, geez, what we do matters, and we have to like up this a little bit or, or whatever. So that's what we're thinking of, making it a little more structured that way, instead of just me and the principal walking around. But it definitely, that's my professional practice goal, to be more visible in each of the buildings with the principals and getting into classrooms. In two, we have, it's a technology goal. We have now so much hardware. We have, we're one-to-one, we have smart boards, we have document cameras, we have everything under the sun. So now the hard part continues. And that's the technology integration and making sure we're using it, and it's a seamless integration into the curriculum. So it's really to promote the use of technology from just enhancing technology or enhancing teaching and learning to one that transforms it. And we've already started some professional development up here at the high school that they had during the half-day. And we're working with some of that at the elementary. So that's, that actually can be an ongoing initiative that keeps going and going, because different things happen, new things come through, there's new apps, new ways to use it. And going one-to-one, especially seven through twelve, is a big change. Even though we had a lot of technology and kids had, you used cards, and teachers were using their MIMI O boards and stuff, one-to-one is a completely different thing when every kid has it every single day to try to find ways to integrate it. So we're gonna try to get, work on that more, and we'll continually do that. Goal number three is one that I talked over with Mrs. Sullivan, and it has to do with all aspects of the district improvement process and to evaluate and restructure all the aspects of the district improvement process. That means the strategic planning process, means the school improvement councils and the school improvement plan process, and how we look at ourselves and come up with our goals and evaluate ourselves to move forward and try to be the best that we can possibly be. It has gotten to the point, we've done the same process for a long time. So we, we wanna look at it and say, is it a little stale? Do we need to change? Do we need to update it? Is there something we're missing? Do we just wanna get some life back into it? So that will be a one-year goal, 'cause we'll look at that this year. And the last one has to do with really some of the circumstances that happened with putting the middle, senior, high school online. And that is where we are now, the Learning Commons. And we are kind of in a flux, because our, as you know, our Library Media Specialist is retiring. And so we are going to a new librarian that will come in and work with this. We went from, I think it was either twelve or fifteen thousand volumes of books, we're down to about four thousand volumes of hard copy books. So what that means is you go with eBooks and digital resources and databases. And so my job over the next year, before we get someone probably for the following year who is a licensed library media specialist to move us ahead, will be to help direct the transformation of the middle, senior, high school library into a digital learning commons that has all the aspects so that teachers and kids can just click into places and get to a number of databases for their research so that they can get to eBooks, more eBooks and have those things. We had a little teeny bit of that when we were at the old high school, but I've since been researching a lot, and we haven't even scratched the surface on all those things. And right now, if kids are gonna do research, they're probably just gonna Google something. But all these subscriptions that we could get, and through the state and through the federal resources, we can get all these subscriptions, and they're safe, educational, research-based databases for kids to do their research on. And there's a lot of eBooks out there that we can get subscriptions to also. So that's gonna be another goal for this year, so. Any questions?
Very ambitious goals, once again. So thank you and good luck. No, they are, they're very ambitious, but I think they're very, they're very centered on the needs of the district. And you obviously have the support of the board to help you with the achievement of these goals.
Billy and I are here for you.
Awesome.
Well, I know the rest of the board is also.
Yeah. Trying to think, I'm looking where I can fit you in.
Good girl. You do that.
Uh, moving on to the approval of policies. Policy sixty-three hundred, which is the student safety policy. Mrs. Smith and I have that. And correlated with that is the Safe Schools Crisis Management Protocol. We're going to table that till next month, because Mr. Bodwell can't be here tonight. And Mr. Bodwell, Mr. Bodwell is, is the one who's facilitated from the very lengthy meetings that we've had on that protocol and the policy as well to facilitate the changes and, and just essentially just streamline it a little bit. So we'll table that till next month. Is that okay, Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, that works.
Excellent. Policy eighty-three oh three, Mr. Holden.
Well, gee, because Mr. Bodwell's not here, I guess I could use that excuse too. Actually, no. I'm sorry, that's not my excuse. Mr. Bodwell, Mr. Bodwell and I did review this student discipline policy. And there is a, a state code toward the end of it that I unfortunately dropped the ball and did not look at it last week due to I was trying to run my business, but regardless. So I, Mr. Bodwell and I met today, and I will look at it next week. And I promise I will have this policy done for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And under warrants, warrant number seventeen A dated October twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and eighty-five cents. I believe, um, we'll have to do a roll call vote. Could I have a motion?
Move.
And the roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye. Recuse.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. It passes. And under the public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during this public forum. And there being no one in the public forum tonight. Under the calendar section for other, October twenty-eighth, half-day for all schools, no PM pre-K. November tenth, the PTO meeting is at the Howard School at seven PM. November eleventh is Veterans Day, so there's no school. The middle, senior, high school, October twenty-third is the drama presentation of Just Desserts at seven PM in the auditorium. And I believe Maya spoke about that. We have one of the stars here tonight.
Real desserts?
Yeah, it's like, um, so it's like a show, but also like everyone's bringing a dessert and making it themselves, so you can raffle on it. It's like you buy a raffle ticket, you put it in, and you can win a dessert.
So it's a night of sweets.
Food and entertainment.
That's even more interesting.
Sweeten's the deal.
October twenty-third and twenty-sixth, Spanish classes to lunch at El Mariachi in Tottenham. November thirteenth, the drama production of Black Box Festival in the auditorium at seven PM.
At the Howard School on October twentieth, we have the Reading is Fundamental program for grades four and five. On October twenty-third, the PTO-sponsored program, Weather, Wind, Water for grades four. On October twenty-seventh, the school council meeting at two forty-five in the conference room. On October twenty-ninth, grade five field trip to Sturbridge Village. October thirtieth, coffee hour at eight thirty AM. Also on October thirtieth, Dare for Grade Six. November second, the Pride Assembly at one forty-five.
Roselle McDonald School on October twentieth, Reading is Fundamental Distribution for all grades. October twenty-first, PTO-sponsored Bubbleology Assembly for grades one and two.
Good job.
October twenty-second, birthdays with the principal. October twenty-sixth, the school council meeting at three thirty in the library. October twenty-second, excuse me, October twenty-seventh, grade two to Moose Hill and Sharon. October twenty-eighth, grade one to C.N. Smith's Farms in East Bridgewater. October thirtieth, grade three field trip to Plymouth Plantation. Spring Street School, October twenty-second, Spring Street School Council Meeting at two forty-five. October twenty-ninth, Halloween Parade, pre-K, pre-K two, what's that? Pre-K two-day students?
Pre-K two-day students. Oh, two-day, okay.
Pre-K two-day students, kids who come two days.
Oh, okay.
Because they have like different sessions, you know?
And then October thirtieth, Halloween Parade Kindergarten in pre-K. November fifth, PTO-sponsored New England Aquarium's Tide Pools Alive.
Does anybody know how the trip went to Montreal with the French students?
Yeah, awesome pictures.
Yeah, from what I heard, students.
Yeah, I didn't hear any more than seeing the pictures. Maya just said the students had.
Yeah.
Did they all come back speaking any French?
Oui oui.
Because you realize that Montreal's an English-speaking city.
I heard the food was good.
You heard the food was good? Did you go?
No, my friend did, though.
Okay.
Maybe we can have him come and do a presentation.
Well, I, I know somebody that also went, so I was curious.
And did they have a good time and learn some French?
Right. Did you talk to them?
No, the teacher.
No, I haven't had time. I'm kind of.
Busy working at the job.
I'll make that call tomorrow just for you, too.
Awesome. You know my number.
And then I'll call you.
Please do. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn, since we need to get home to run our businesses.
Actually, yes. The next regular school committee meeting will be Monday, November sixteenth at six thirty PM here at the middle, senior, high school Learning Commons. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move seconded. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you all.